All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call into order our Sherwood City Council meeting for November 4th, 2025. We're kinda jumping the gun there, sir. We'll call to order at five after seven. All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Be in pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, no, I'm gonna intentionally slow roll it now, Mr. Impatient. Anyways, welcome, everybody. Sylvia, roll call.
Mayor Rosner.
Here.
Council President Young.
Here.
Counselor Brous.
Here.
Counselor Stankey.
Here.
Counselor Mays.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Giles.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Sylvia, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I heard a aye from Renee. Motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Next on the agenda is our consent agenda. We have five items on the agenda tonight. Approval of the October 21st, 2025 city council meeting minutes. Resolution 2025-076, appointing, gonna mispronounce this.
Quasi cabana.
Cabana as the Youth Advisory Board representative to the Transportation System Plan Update Citizen Advisory Committee. Resolution 2025-077, authorizing the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement, IGA with Metro for the installation service and maintenance of a Sharps collection box to be located at the Marjory Stewart Senior Community Center. That is pretty cool. And then item D is Resolution 2025-078, authorizing the city manager execute a contract for Murdoch Park master plan construction ready design documents. And last but not least is Resolution 2025-079, approving the First Amendment to the Employment Agreement between the City of Sherwood and the city manager Craig Sheldon.
I move consent.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I heard an aye from Renee as well. Thank you, everybody. Motion passes. Citizen comments. Sylvia, do we have anything?
I have none, mayor.
Awesome. We are moving right along. All right, our next item is recognition of Noel Gush. Did I pronounce that right? Yes. National American Miss Oregon Pre-Teen. The city council would like to call forward Noel to be recognized for being crowned the National American Miss Oregon Pre-Teen on June 28th at the Miss Oregon Scholarship Program Pageant. Noel, a Sherwood seventh grader, seventh grade student, representing Oregon in this national competition. Congratulations.
Thank you.
That is very, very cool. Tell us a little bit about the competition and how you got involved in all that.
I started NAMM this year. This is my first year ever doing this system. When I started with IJM when I was six years old, that's when I started doing pageants. And I started NAMM because I noticed how much their queens were interacting with each other online and I noticed how much of a good bond their queens had. So I decided I wanted to try it out. So I tried it out in June and I won. And then I'm gonna go into the international competition in July or in November this month. And I'm really excited to do that because I've been working since June and I'm just super excited.
Now, do you get to travel somewhere fun for the?
Yes, I get to travel to Florida, so I get to compete there.
Very cool. Well, so I understand, I have great notes here. Thank you, Sylvia. I understand that you do some work with taking care of cats and kittens and needs. Can you tell us, tell us about that?
So I started with the Cat Alliance Team Sanctuary about four years ago. And we started volunteering at PetSmart and I went to go and clean the cats' cages, enclosures, feed them, play with them. And I've been doing it ever since and I love doing it. I love interacting with the cats. And we've had a lot of drives recently. You can also check them out on my social media. We do drives with pet medical supplies, with different things for fosters so that they have a better opportunity of living because survival chances are really low now that it's starting to get to the colder seasons and we're finding animals outside. And I think it's really important to look at my social media and go donate.
Awesome, very cool. I know we have at least one cat lover on council. Maybe two or three. Any other questions from the rest of council?
I was just gonna make some comments.
Go for it.
Yeah. First of all, for a seventh grader, you are very well spoken. I'm very impressed in that you started volunteering like four years ago. That's like third grade. I mean, so to start giving back to your community at such a young age, you have a long way to go. But I mean, that's, that's really amazing. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, my son's in seventh grade and I'm just trying to picture, he doesn't, not nearly as, as well spoken and whatnot. I love you Connor. That tiara is enormous. Is it heavy?
Not really. It's honestly pretty nice. It sits well comfortably on my head. I've been having grounds on my head since I was, what, six years old? So there's an indent now.
Very used to it.
Permanent spot for it to sit.
Thank you.
Congratulations. It's amazing. Good work.
So I don't know hardly anything about pageants, but do you, I remember there used to be at least a talent competition. Did you have a particular talent that you did for this?
Talent is now optional with this system.
Okay.
It's an optional competition. It's not required. Required things are like an interview, an onstage introduction, formal wear where I have like a big ball gown. And those are the only required ones, but talent isn't optional. And I did do talent at the state level. I did a monologue from Clueless. And so that was really fun.
So what was the hardest interview question that you had?
Probably talking about why I'd want to win that system, just because it's not something super generic. It's something like super specific to that system. And so I really tried to like bring out why I wanted to do this system and like talked about the sisterhood like I did before.
Great. Congrats.
Thank you.
Very cool. Any other questions or comments? I think we're good. Well, we have, we have a cert, frame certificate we want to present to you. We're gonna do a big picture with all of council down there, so come on down.
Awesome. And I am sure your parents are very, very proud. Might even let him take a photo.
We've got many years of foster kids in our house.
You said you have to be in the photo. We're not, we don't care about being in the photo. Actually, I see my place.
I'll let the photographer actually do it.
I didn't bring my big camera.
One more of the official city archive here.
Ready? One, two, three. Do one more this. One, two. We got back.
Congratulations so much.
What school do you guys?
I go to Sherwood.
How are you doing? Oh, no. Local won't come out till eight.
All right. That was a lot of fun. Usually, most of the stuff we do is very dry and boring, so it's fun to have some exciting stuff to talk about. So we're gonna go ahead and move on to our next item on the agenda.
Very short meeting.
Yes, is city manager report. Craig, what do you have to report out on?
Evening, mayor. Counsel, I just have a few things. I wanna talk a little bit about the community resource, resource information for residents affected by the SNAP and benefit changes. Sherwood YMCA has a food pantry. It's open Wednesday from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And I want to let you know the city is partnering with them on this, so some financial support for the next month. St. Francis also has a food pantry on Wednesdays and Thursdays, various hours. Helping Hands Food Pantry, third Saturday of each month. Willowbrook Food Pantry, Tuesday and Fridays. And that's off Edie Road. The City of Sherwood's offering direct utility billing support to residential customers that can actually show their SNAP card as well as a driver's license. The Senior Center will start offering oatmeal breakfast bar next Monday, the 10th of November. That'll be from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. during the, during this time. We are adding about an hour each day to one of the staff members that works part-time over to make this program happen. And then on Fridays at the Senior Center, there'll be take-home meals for the seniors. That's Friday afternoons for food, for Insecure, as well as SNAP. Public Works, any questions on that? I know I'd sent us email out, but we kinda tied things up yesterday afternoon and this morning, so.
I'm assuming we're putting that on our Facebook page and various social media.
We will. Tonight, we just finished up the actual senior center stuff, so before we come down here. Public Works Leaf Pickup Program starts Monday, three areas. You can find that on our website, as well as I know we did a social media post of when we're in your area for the next six weeks or so. Sherwood Citizen University, this will be our last Thursday at the Police Department. We'll be wrapping that up and then we'll actually try to get the seven or eight people here on the 2nd of December for certificates, if we can make that work. And then I'd just like to, Captain John Carlson's retiring this Friday at 3:30 at the Police Department. Started his career here in 95 as a paid reserve, joined full-time in 97 and has worked his way up through to captain. So I just wanna thank John for his 30 years of service and contributions to the public safety field. And throughout these three decades, he served the community with honor, professionalism, and compassion, earning respect from colleagues as well as residents alike. Captain Carlson's been a mentor, a leader, steady presence for the Police Department, helping shape the department to who, who they are today over there. And then Veterans Day recognition, Tuesday, November 11th at 11:00 a.m. at the Art Center to honor veterans and their service and dedication. And then I just wanna thank Public Works for the support they provided for the trick-or-treat this last week, weekend, and also for the Police Department for having a little booth downtown, socializing with our residents and businesses. Any questions for myself or the department heads that are here tonight?
Looks like Dan has a question.
Yeah. I do have a question for you. Tonight in our consent agenda, we passed the Sharps Collection Box at the Senior Center. I saw that the IGA starts the 15th of this month. Do you know when that installation will happen about? Okay, thank you.
Do we still have the Sharps Collection?
I don't think so.
Oh, we have the drug collection. No, we don't have that anymore either.
That was taken out a few years ago.
Yeah, it's been gone for four or five years.
Memory's starting to go.
I just wanted to say thank you to Craig and Kristen for jumping on that SNAP, trying to brainstorm. Tim and I met just last Thursday with you guys and here it's only Tuesday. We already have some solutions to help our community. There's just a big need until these SNAP benefits get restored, so.
Also, thanks to all the community organizations that are jumping in and helping with that too. Shout out to them.
And I'm sure if some of those organizations need help along the way, we'd be willing to help them out too. But we felt the YMCA has refrigerators for produce and some of those things. And that's what they're, they were short on, so that's where the city stepped in.
Let's hope it's a short-lived need.
Yes. So, thank you.
Any other questions for Craig or Stan? All right. We will go ahead and move on to council announcements. Who would like to go first today?
I think you started that way last time, so I think it's Taylor.
Okay, Taylor, you're up.
All right, so I attended the planning commission meeting. We approved the plan for the lot just across the way here, across the street, kind of from Cannery Square, after a public comment. The one thing that was kind of an outlying to-do action is to look at the tree code. I know that council has said, you know, I, I, I get that things have come up and there's been a lot of things with Sherwood West and everything else, but that was, that was one of the comments that was made. And so I'm just reporting back that that is still top of mind for some citizens. And the builder seemed really engaged with providing a beautiful site there that is, that I think is gonna be a real asset to Old Town. Other than that, I, I do have a thing that I wrote here about some of the stuff in, in answer to some of the concerns that I've heard in the community that I'd like to read just for my own benefit here. When I first campaigned to be on the city council, I knocked door to door throughout Sherwood and met many of the residents and asked about top priorities for you. And I, I always ended my conversations with the question, what does the future of Sherwood look like to you? The answer that I heard far and away the most was I want to keep Sherwood Sherwood. And as I reflect on what makes Sherwood feel special, it is not our tree-lined streets, our fantastic trails, our sports team, our performing arts groups, our businesses, our police department, our festivals and events. It is all of it together. It is our community. It is what each of us adds to the city that makes it special. It is the people who recognize the specialness of city, of Sher, the city of Sherwood and want to contribute to it. Some of our members in this community are hurting right now and they're not feeling safe because this weekend, a longtime Sherwood resident and mother of two was removed from our community while taking her child to school. While I will continue to work with community groups to ensure that she receives due process in any way that I can, many people have asked me where they can get accurate information about what they can do to help. I've found the following sites to be helpful in understanding some of these complex issues that we're currently living through. PIRC, which is, the website is PIRCOregon.org, has a phone number that you can call and they also have very informative articles. And then ACLU-OR.org has some great educational courses about, about what your civil rights are and different things like that. And there's volunteer opportunities on both sites. And I've come to the conclusion, if we want, if we truly want Sherwood to stay Sherwood, we need to continue to love and support others that share that vision. And given that this is a one-way kind of forum, if anybody out there wants more information about anything I've talked about, I'm available to talk to anyone. The number that rings to my cell phone is 971-405-2120. And I'd be happy to talk with anybody who has questions about it or is looking to help in any way. And I appreciate, you know, the, the people who have already stepped up to help take care of, of those kids and some of the other things that are, that frankly have been members of our community for 15 years now. And, and so I'm, I'm, that's one of the things that makes Sherwood special. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Taylor. Dan?
The Traffic Safety Board met last week and the, the biggest thing that came out of that for me was talking about the pedestrian crossings. One of the board members mentioned that if there's a way to have our lights remain green when not activated to help drivers know that that is, you know, to drive through when they're off, just like if we were to lose power on our four-way lights, you know, you come to a stop. Where these being off, it's trying to training the drivers to not stop in those instances when they see a light off. And so to have them be green when not activated was a recommendation from the Traffic Safety Board, which made sense to me.
The lights on the bridge?
Sorry, the lights for like school crossing, like our, you know, the one in front of the district office.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yeah, so the traffic lights.
Right now, it's either red when pedestrians have triggered it or it's nothing.
Or it's off.
So it's saying it should be green.
Typically, when it's off, people should stop. It is for that one, yes. But, but for other ones, that may not be the case. And so for future ones, as we're developing these and installing these, just use best practice if we can. Just to touch on the SNAP benefits again, if you happen to have an abundance, please provide for others. All the places that city manager mentioned, accept donations. And so if you're able to help, you know, this is our community that we're helping. And then I just, I had something to say as well. You know, at the start of every meeting, we pledge allegiance to the flag of our country and we say specifically with liberty and justice for all. So I wanted to address the increased size presence in Sherwood as well. First off, our state has sanctuary promise laws, which for the purposes of this comment, limits the use of our local police department to, for immigration enforcement. Our Sherwood Police does not enforce immigration law and no local resources will be used for immigration-related matters except in narrowly defined instances such as a signed federal warrant. The Sherwood Police Department under Chief Hanlon is committed to fair, unbiased policing and maintaining the community trust that has been built over the years. If you witness a crime such as assault, hit-and-run, kidnapping, you should call the Sherwood Police to report it. They are there to help us and it is one of the ways that we can help people. So yeah, just please do your part to keep our community safe and intact. These are our families, our friends, and our neighbors.
Not a lot tonight. I had Parks, Parks Board last night. I attended that. It was a pretty light agenda, but there was a good discussion around kind of the, every year, they kind of relook at what are, what are the Parks Board kind of top 10 or so priorities that kind of near, near and medium term, right? And so they kind of just review that list, make sure to add a couple things, take a couple things off of it. So that was last night. And then next month's meeting, I think they're gonna, they're gonna do a deeper dive into trails discussion. It's something that consistently pulls at the top of every, every, every community poll we do, whether it's about parks or it's about just what do you like about the city of Sherwood. Trails is always the number one or number two thing on all of those lists. So I think there's, they wanna have a discussion around where are there opportunities for trail development, particularly given budgetary constraints. They have a, there is an annual budget for trails. So where can they judiciously kind of give direction to us on where we might want to spend some of that money? Connecting a gap or, or a particular project that might be, you know, more beneficial to the community than others. So I think they're gonna do a deep dive conversation into that at the next meeting. So that's all I have for today.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Cultural Arts, Matt. They were excited because they talked about a whole bunch of art stuff. So from the, they got the update on the lights that are now on-site. That'll be installed on the street light poles here soon. They are snowflakes that'll be on every other, every other blue pole spaced out through an Old Town. So they were excited about that. They were excited that the deer are, are home on the Roundabout of Oregon. Lots of nice positive feedback from the community already. They're excited about the medallions and the progress that's being made on the medallions. They're excited about, they're gonna do a ask, it's gonna be a community submittal of art for the wrap that'll go on the bathroom at Cannery Square. The theme is the seasons of Sherwood. So pretty excited to see what we come back with. It'll be a fully realized piece of art. And I believe the expectation is that it'll get, those to get narrowed down and then the Cultural Arts wants to present them to city council and let y'all weigh in. And they were super excited. The mayor is excited about the idea of wrapping utility boxes. So that was cool. And they were planning, doing some steps for planning, you know, future events like Lunar New Year and some, and other stuff that's rock and roll right around the corner. I think that's it.
As a reminder, that bathroom wrap was paid for by the Community Enhancement Grant Program.
No, it wasn't.
It wasn't?
It was not, it was not funded by the grant program. It was applied and it got skipped.
Oh, my bad.
Instead, the fine city manager found some resources in somewhere.
All right. And if, if, if you don't know what they're talking about with the wraps for the utility boxes, you see them all over Tualatin. They look really nice and kind of spiff up the place. I am excited about that. I'm excited to see what they come up with for art too.
Excited to see what they can.
Yeah, yeah. Awesome. Thank you. Renee?
Yeah, is it working?
Yeah, it is.
Can you hear me? Okay. First, thank you, Dan, and sorry, my brain is fried. Taylor, for making your comments about what we're experiencing. And I too would extend my assistance to anybody who wants to have a conversation. As far as announcements, I would like to share that on Thursday, this coming Thursday, November 6th, from 2:00 to 4:00, is a ribbon cutting of the newly named Merrill Gardens, formerly the Accra Lee of Sherwood. And we will be doing a ribbon cutting around 2:15 that day. So come on out to support a new business. And on Saturday is the annual Wine Festival that is hosted by the Sherwood Rotary Club. The money stays in the community and also for our international projects in Columbia and will be held at the Redberry Barn from 1:00 to 7:00. And I think that's all I have at this point in time.
All right, thank you, Renee. Kim?
I don't have any assignments to report on, but I will say that Counselor Giles and I met yesterday, yesterday with Assistant City Manager Kristen and City Manager Craig Sheldon. We met with a community member and a consultant per se, just on accessibility and inclusive parks again. It was actually a very productive meeting. I actually learned a lot. This last time that this resident came forward was when we were doing the Woodhaven Park and it was a little bit too far in the process, even though we did pivot and add some accessible items. What this conversation was for is just because they're ADA compliant doesn't necessarily mean they're accessible, inclusive to, to all disabilities. And one of the things that really got hammered home was even if we didn't add any other features to our parks, is that the bark-chip landings are a hindrance to most people with mobility issues, not just wheelchairs. If they have braces on their legs, if they're crutches, autistics, you know, just the, the bark chips. So she said if anything like their, their community is not expecting the world, but the start would be some different surface, even if it's not all of the surface, just having a solid surface around one of the components that, that, that these kids with disabilities could have easier. So just, it was just a great conversation to, as we're looking for planning now Murdoch and then in the future Schneider's gonna be replaced and Redfern, Lady Fern, having that at the forefront. And the consultant that was there was more than willing to even come to parks and just present ideas of things to be thinking of. So it was a great, it was actually a productive meeting. I really enjoyed it.
In fact, they even said something about the caregivers and the grandparents of these people. You know, some of them may not be as steady on the barks either, on the bark. And so if they're wanting to take their grandkids to the park, it's, it's a problem. So, yeah.
I know parks is a huge, yeah, it came up last night.
Yeah.
Not to mention the splinters.
Yeah, that, yeah.
I can't make it.
I'm bark?
Anyways. Getting impatient there.
Nope, I'm good. I'm ready to talk more.
I just got a couple things before we adjourn. The so last, we had a special meeting last week on Tuesday, just to remind the community. And we passed three resolutions, one declaring an emergency election and two, setting up a election for the community in January 15th, I believe. Is that correct?
January 13th, Mr. Mayor.
January 13th, thank you. And we're, we're asking the community to vote on two charter amendments. One that would protect our community's rights to having a open and transparent process when it comes to land use decisions within our cities and another to protect the city's rights around the procedural processes for annexation. The, the reason for that, in my opinion, and I think most of council share this, is there's been a lot of overreach from the state, preemption of local, local rule and local control, which is protected in our constitution, our state constitution, where what's called a home rule states. And so we want to get ahead of that with the state. Just found out today that ONA, which is a state agency that regulates land use and housing, just came out with some preliminary rules that would further erode our ability to make our own decisions as a community about what our community looks like. They're coming up with model code that, and they're using language like, we must adopt that code, so.
I'm okay.
Yeah, something we have to, it's a constant battle. We continue to do that work in Salem and lobbying on behalf of cities. And, and, but I just wanted to raise that to the community that even though they're out of session, the regulatory process is happening in Salem and they continue to work, continuing to work on. to work, continuing to work on eroding local control. So go check out our, our meeting last week. It's in, you can go find that video and you can hear more about that subject. Yes.
On that point, it would be a really nice change of pace if the response from Salem to our proposals to our charter amendments, they might actually go back and modify those laws that we are taking issue with.
That, that would be great.
I would love that result.
Mr.?
Yeah, yes.
I, I would just remind the, you and remind the public, it is a tab under the city council's webpage. There's an election tab. The public can go there. They can see the election dates. They can see the ballot measure stuff that we've, we've publicized.
Good to know.
Yeah. I, you know, if I'm giving the legislature the benefit of the doubt, I don't think they knew what they were voting for with Senate Bill nine seven four. One representative voted against that bill and that was Courtney Neuron, our representative. So I want to give her a little shout out for stand, our, our senator now, representative then, for standing up for the rights of cities to control their own destiny. Anyways, I just wanted to throw that out there. There's just a lot of stuff going on right now. I will miss the December second meeting. I will be out of the country for work. But so Kim will be running that meeting in December and also gets to do the tree lighting ceremony on the sixth. Fun, fun.
Hey Noel, you want to come light a tree?
There you go.
Watch for your email.
Connecting dots. See how that works? Anyways, unless there's anything else for the good order, we're going to go ahead and adjourn our regular meeting and we'll go back in our room back there for our urban renewal district meeting, which is open to the public by, by the way, if people want to come back there for that. We are adjourned.